Hello, hello.
You'll find them, you, I think, towards the, uh, they'll be stapled, yep.
So, question for you guys is some of these I have not, yeah, so accommodations. I don't know that in that sources.
We see what accommodations were.
That is collected through franchise fees from the, uh, Sumter County.
Three hundred.
They already like trying to be money, right?
Yes, so when it comes to the franchise fees. There are several categories that they're trying to, um. Split into different categories. And since I have been here. I have tried to separate each category. And there's just way too many. And when I spoke with the Secretary of State's office, they said, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, the Treasurer's office, they said that. It presents a nightmare for accounting purposes, but, um. They just report the different categories and I can't tell you when they, they change or whatnot, I just have a spreadsheet. Of different categories, so the accommodations as well as the court fees. Are just two of several of those categories.
Okay, so you're saying accommodations comes from franchise fees?
Yes, there's, um, yeah, from, it comes from the franchise fees out of Sumter County. When, um, you received that Black River franchise fees check, you remember?
Yes, I do.
Okay, the stub will tell you information on that and then.
That's, that's specific franchise fee from Black River, I'm just trying to find out. What are accommodations? For three hundred and seventy-five dollars, I don't, I don't think it goes into the franchise fees, I've called all the franchise.
Okay, unless you look specifically at the stubs, you're gonna have a hard time. And that has been part of the task that I was given. Collecting every single stub from a deposit or a check. That explained exactly what that check included.
Eighty-seven million, that's pretty standard, that's going to be the stage right here. Uh, she's talked to me about that, she says the budget that's saving out for this coming year. It will not change, business permits. Definitely a rise, but I don't know why the rise or if there's more business permits that are being.
I think that they were saying that. For many years, people were not paying for business licenses and stuff, and now they are.
That's.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have a specific list, maybe that we would be able to go from to see if those are going to renew or if they are just. Like a parade or something like that, maybe it's. They just.
I mean, some things are, you already know, but do you have a list of them?
That is, that was being prepared as of last year.
I know that, um, like before with the.
Is your job, you are in work session?
Four, four years and.
Six thirty, work session at five thirty to six thirty.
Um, there are a lot of others.
Okay.
So.
So we use.
Yes.
Okay, okay, bye-bye.
To make it.
Is there somebody that would like to take that on, giving that notice?
I'm not doing.
Uh, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, that's what I get a list of, um. Places that needs to pay taxes and like this other businesses, you said, you need help.
Okay, so when it comes to the business licenses, some of that income came from the, uh. Festival, uh, there were vendors and some of it came from permits that, um, sometimes people like come and wanna be a vendor in the town for. A holiday to make money, um, and. Were, actually, that should be on a few, a really future, close future agenda to discuss the business license because. Uh, the town needs to decide if. Uh, being a member or paying into the system that actually keeps track of those businesses is worth it.
Didn't we, weren't we told that one time that Sumter is gonna take over that?
No.
They're not going to.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a discussion on it being a flat fee versus, and then MASC was, um, having their attorneys draft a letter stating. That small municipalities, um, would not be required by law to have a business license, but that business license fee. The name would be different, it would just be a flat fee and it would not be based on income.
But it would be yours.
Yes, yes. So, uh, uh, that's, but that has been in the past, so that's not for next year.
Still want to take that?
I do.
Let me go back down accommodations, do you want to keep that into the potential?
Yes, um, I would, so that we can get clarification.
So you'd take it out, right?
No, I'm saying we believe in. And so we can get clarification.
You'll find those accommodation.
We can always get it up there. I will do this with it right now.
Okay, so as far as the business permits, where do you want to, like, I just thought it's eleven hundred, not knowing. You think that, that's the, I think it's gonna be more than eight and eighteen hundred or less, let's, uh, use estimates so that. We can set a budget.
I think that's what it is, yeah.
Maybe eleven hundred.
I'd ask how you're gonna get there.
That's why I said he is getting the list, so that we can look at.
I mean, where do you think Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Johnson, the ex?
Well, when you have functions in town. That allows vendors, that is what helps this, uh. It's not only business licensing, it's also vendor fees.
But right now, we don't have any.
That's why I said it, it's, it's something to think about, if you think that the town is going to have a function where they have vendors. Or if you're gonna be trying to generate income, that would be something to consider. Town activities generate revenue. So. What do you think, May Brown?
Uh, would you still like to pursue that list, just so we know, we should have a list of all vendors that paid last year.
Okay.
Then we can let it see.
If we have to need to, that number, do we still have time? It, it's to the end of eight.
Now, we should have it already done, we'll just be late, but right now, if you can give a list of, I mean. Business permits and let us look at the transitory statements from the events, and then we can get an idea of. We can base it pretty much on. The established business permits right now, then go from maybe the activities that we may have, parades and anything like that. So, pardon?
Yeah.
Court fines. Do we have any court income? Come in?
No, didn't she say she was, um, gonna start having court? I think she was gonna start. I thought she was related to even something, right? Oh, it was only something.
No, she's had court here.
Here, yeah, that's what she said. I've never said it back ticket and it's like that with the end of the.
But I don't think, I think those court fines are considered to be under the aid to subdivision and accommodation, com- accommodations. On those, um, pace, those check stubs.
Explain that to me.
The check stubs for the franchise fees are broken down, some of them are for watercraft. There's a total figure, but the total figure is broken down and court fee, court fines is some of it, and that's coming straight directly from Sumter County.
You're saying the court fines are coming from Sumter County?
You can find court fi- court fees. On the check stubs.
Okay, so all I'm asking right now is, what is the income that we've had? Over the past two years of court fines?
You'd have to ask the magistrate then.
The magistrate regularly not giving that. So I'm asking, perhaps your, what has come in from that?
I can't give an answer to that right now.
Could you find that out, please?
It, what, you, there's two things you're asking or just one?
Just one, all I want is just the court fines.
Okay.
Franchise fees, there are quite a few franchise, Black River has a franchise fee. There is Duke Energy that has a franchise fee and that's about fifteen percent, ended up being about fifteen thousand dollars this last year, and I think Black River was seven thousand. We have FTC, I don't know exactly what it is. There are a few other, I can break those out for you. Um, I could not come up with this last year franchise fees being fifty-three thousand dollars, that was new on range of thirty-five thousand dollars. Two years ago, but I just added everything that it comes through from Black River, do FTC. From Sumter County or Sumter City Water. I've built some of those, but I couldn't see fifty-three thousand dollars of income coming in there. Do you know? As comments?
No.
So I can check again. I'll add that up one more time, just see where we are, plus I'll give you a list of all the franchises that we get things from, do you guys know how the franchise is? So, Sumter City, because we gave over. We're working with that, they have contractors, they pay us like sixty-five hundred dollars. Each year for that, it, it doesn't go on during that time period, I think there's. A limitation of it, I don't know if it's within the next ten years, I'll have to talk to them, they talked to me a little bit about it. Black River is a constant, uh, it comes in based on the usage of the Black River in, uh, the neighborhood. And then Duke Energy is the same exact thing, and they just raised theirs, um. Was it fifty percent, it's five percent, three point five, and I think you guys enacted the three point five, five percent. So, I will get a list of all those, and then we can look at where we are as far as that fifty-three thousand dollars.
It's going great.
Say that again.
I said, it has lost that.
Lost their money.
When I first moved, we had a corporate energy, and I never had a line go over two hundred dollars, two thirty. Now I'm getting bills for.
Yes, that's correct.
I did, but. I didn't want to raise, she just said that everybody's bill is just going.
MESC, there's four different, uh, sources of income with MESC. I did attract the sixty-five thousand dollars that we got, one comes from insurance, so there are insurances all over South Carolina. We get a portion of insurance premiums, a part of that. There's a brokerage tax, I can't tell you exactly what that is, but there's a fee that we get, part of that, telecommunication, and there's one other. It's on the website, but I did write it down, and that is totaling right now sixty-five thousand dollars. And talking with Charlie, he said be very careful. About putting sixty-five thousand dollars down there, because if any of those people in those. Specific areas like the insurance, if some of those people drop their insurance, that drops our amount that comes in. So, so when it comes, uh. Bad economy, a lot of people drop their insurance and that will end up dropping whatever you guys make. So, I put down fifty-five. I don't know economy-wise, if you feel like we're okay to go with sixty-five against next year. That may be something that you need to look at, I would rather have a cushion and just make sure we don't. More than what we're now with their client. Telecommunication, I have not got any information for you on telecommunication, twenty-five hundred dollars that I was there. Uh, it was twenty-three hundred before, so obviously there's a raise there, do you know if we've asked through?
MASC?
The second telecommunication one? Then there'd be two of them.
MASC has four programs, you mentioned that, and the, the, um.
They have four programs, I've already mentioned the insurance, the telecommunication, the brokerage, and there's one other. But MESC, I included all of those four in sixty-five thousand.
So, something is off. I don't see, I don't see this, uh, I don't know if MASC includes the, um. Setoff debt, and then the telecommunication was separate, but that telecommunication, um, should be part of MASC. I don't know of another telecommunication franchise fee.
I'll have to check that, if that's the case, then.
No, it just would be categorized differently.
Well, what I'm saying is I already included telecommunication in the sixty-five thousand.
Okay, so it should go up for set off debt? Because I didn't hear you mention set off debt.
I didn't, that's the fourth one, thank you. All of those, the set off, telecommunication, the brokerage, the insurance are the sixty-five thousand dollars you could go in last year.
Okay.
So the twenty-five hundred dollars, I don't know what that's.
Okay.
Offered tax is staying pretty much the same, Charlie said you probably need to look at that, um, I think you're at point zero five bills. And we need to reassess, let's see where we are, you should probably have more there, you said, we said, I would say anything more than twenty-five thousand. Until we improve your sales tax, uh, we would have to eighty-two thousand this last year. I have got a lot of direction on work to set down, so I just sent it a little bit lower, you guys tell me, because I've been around the budgets. It was significantly twenty thousand dollars.
The council, um, usually, uh, did not participate in preparing all of the budget. So, yeah, so, um, that's probably why they're not able to answer most of your questions.
Okay, I, you guys have been involved in this before. All right, I'll check into that, right there, the sales tax, state treasurer will be able to help the. Water department, sixty-five thousand, that comes in, like I said, that's one that, uh, is not indefinitely, therefore go as long as they get the contract. So, you guys probably know that.
So you have it twice?
What's that?
The water department?
No, I just included this one franchise. But it's not part of the money, that water department is something different, if I included it in franchise, I apologize, it's not part of the fifty-three thousand. Rentals, and you, but they're in center. Obviously, this is not an income, it's gonna be coming in, any more to us. That you guys have information on that.
I think it's past that point now.
What's that?
I think it's past that point now.
What's past that?
Uh, being able to, um, for the town to receive all the income from the buffoon learning center.
Um, would you mind? Looking at the deposits for twenty-three, twenty-four, for the rental of that?
Yes, I'm actually in the process of totaling everything so that I can have my own tally of what's on record. Compare it to QuickBooks and, and yours.
Rebates and others, I don't know what this is.
Where'd you, where'd you get that figure from?
It's coming from the budget. Last year.
I'd have to look at that, I don't know either. Not off the top of my head.
And interest, so the rebates have gone from twelve thousand, five hundred, then interest thirteen thousand, fifteen hundred. So projected, uh, I'm saying we got two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, plus we certified. As income. You guys have any suggestions, any ideas, anything you would like to ask this, I've got the things that I will check on, Cynthia's looking at the list of business permits. Anything else, you guys have suggestions on potential income?
I do. As part of the set off that. Violations in town are enforced through set off. Before violations can be distributed, they need to be set up in the system. So that the set off debt would be able to perform the search and, uh, begin the communication of collection.
Can you explain that process, so if somebody had some kind of violation in town?
Right, so let me, for the, to, just a quick recap of the set off that, right now, anyone who, let's just say. Ms. Jones had a thousand dollar electric bill that she skipped out on. The electric company would report her to the set off debt to collect those funds. And the town would play a part in that, and the magistrate every year. In that very same system, you can add additional things to be collected through that program. And council has previously discussed litter. Or the tra- the trash as well as, um, speeding, as well as. Uh, overgrown homes, and so the, the list of potential violations are based on it, it ordinances and those that violate. The set off debt is a soft reinforcement. So, the last thing that they talked about was adding the trash and definitely trimming of the, um. The maintenance men started tr- trimming trees and cutting trees back that were actually in the street and nobody was, no homeowner was taking care of it. Um, they didn't let anyone know that's what they were doing, but the tractor. Got a flat tire that day, and it cost the town over seven hundred dollars just for helping. Someone who refuses to even respond about their yard being overgrown, so, um, that's something that, that needs to be discussed in the future so that, uh. It can be reported and the proper notices can be sent, so that the homeowner has an opportunity to remedy the issue, if not, then. They get put, submitted to the set off debt and then the town, um, they, the, they get it from their taxes. Or the person come, contacts the magistrate and they come and pay it. So. And I know at least four homes that got like almost a thousand dollars worth of trim- trimming from town maintenance, just to make sure that the town was taken care of.
Nice maintenance, man.
Well, they didn't notify anyone they were doing it, it just was like, the tire was flat. Why is the tire flat? Cause they were trimming branches that were in the street, almost to the other side. No one reported that the trees were out, so, um, that, that goes underneath council duties. Who's reporting the streetlights and the tree branches, maintenance is also supposed to report the tree branches and overgrown limbs and grass and stuff like that.
So, I, I'm still struggling a little bit on, if somebody didn't pay their electric bill. We are in partnership with the electric to help take care of it.
We are partnered with MASC and MASC is also partnered with the electric company to litigate that. It's a reporting system.
Okay, so.
So means they'll get a cut out of that?
Oh, yeah. So they'll let Ms. Jones that owed a thousand dollars to Duke Energy, when she skipped out on that. That was submitted to set off that, the set off debt notifies the magistrate, this is a list of people who are delinquent. Send them a letter and collect those funds and deposit it.
Would you mind if I include the public in this, you guys mind, I've got a mayor sitting right there, former mayor of a small town. I would just like some clarification, I'm not understanding.
This is a, you know, public participation, but.
I, that's why I'm asking the council, the elected officials, if I can get some counsel, if we can get some coaching on, we've got a mayor sitting right here to help.
You, I mean, Charlie does always, we can always call Charlie, we can.
Sure. Alright, expenses. These are. Pretty self evident, um, there are two things, a stadium, I don't know. Don't know that we need a stadium, six hundred dollars we don't need there. You guys are paid again. And salaries. Stadium. Magistrate clerk. The clerk. I don't know who the clerk was or is, but there's a clerk supposedly for twelve hundred dollars.
This is she the clerk treasurer. Yeah, I understand, but. She hasn't, she's never told me anything about that. You don't have a word to me.
Okay, so we can take that off. Okay, we've got an attorney. I just budgeted five thousand dollars. Presently, um. Significant rise in in salaries, um. I don't know that we're making a lot of the magistrate. I don't know how much we need. There's been two years that nothing has been done. That I know of. Do you guys feel like we need a magistrate? We have a court for two years.
But she has now started him, right?
She, she's, she's had it.
In the process of him, she's speaking with Sumter County. About our pass tickets and things like that in Mayville so that she can proceed in hand in court.
So when it comes to the magistrate, the last time that the sheriff department was here. It was stated, the magistrate is open for business. Court is being held in the town of Maysville. Please send Maysville their cases or their information. That communication is broken. So when it comes to Sumter County. Figures for the town of Maysville as far as uh what violations and and stuff like that, what they total. That number has not been disclosed or shown. I, I, I don't, no one knows what that looks like.
So why is that broken?
I don't have an answer for that. It preceded me. I just know that since I've been here, I've seen the magistrate communicate several times attempting. To get either information regarding how many people Sumter County are stopping in May, in the town of Maysville. In other words, what portion is Sumter County? Collecting that should be going directly to the town of Maysville via the cases as well as funds. And, and the same situation goes for permits. The town is not aware of all the permits that are purchased in the um not, not within town. But also without, out of town, so. The people who get permits, they take care of it in Sumter. For Maysville. Sometimes they will send over a permit that only needs Maysville's signature. But Maysville does not collect the funds for those permits, nor do they see any of those funds, even with the signature.
You're telling Sumter County collects permits.
They collect the fees for permits, uh, a few, uh, mm-hmm, from what I remember, um. The previous administration said that they um, they. The previous administration stated that um it wasn't financially. Um feasible for the town to actually pay the Sumter County to do all of their um licensing and and permits. I think Sumter County pay, uh, they, they charge more than what Maysville used to charge, so. They would not see a benefit from that.
Okay, I'll talk to Sumter County. Who would want to check on the magistrate's and connection with? Where do you say the, the communication is broken between magistrate and?
She would have to disclose that. I'm not, I don't.
To use an update like the meeting, um. We used to have a section for her, right? For the meeting. I mean, she really knew about it herself. Her communicating this.
Alright, benefits, you're probably going to, Miss Collins have to enlighten us a little bit on administrative benefits.
Where did you get your dollar figure from?
These are all coming from that budget from previous.
Right, well, of course, it was just labeled benefits. Okay, so. The only benefit that I can think of is P B A and I see it uh listed. Right, so. I don't know about that. I mean, you, benefits has zero, but the salaries has a total, so what are you referring to with benefits?
These were benefits on expenses in the previous years.
Okay, benefits of administrative maintenance and magistrate?
Correct. The magistrate had six hundred thirty nine forty dollars and forty cents. And benefits twenty six hundred to maintenance and six thousand ten and ten and eight cents went to the administrative benefits.
Could these be? Interest? I wonder.
I would love to make that much interest, but no, I doubt it.
So that needs to be investigated.
Blackware nineteen hundred was spent supposedly on advertising. That's what was funded. I am proposing that we budget five thousand. Last year nineteen hundred was spent or budgeted. I propose we budget five thousand so that we can. Get a proper AM website, do some branding, uh, create a database and. Facebook called the social media attached to it so that we can start promoting things though. Do you think it needs to be more? It probably does, but. There, we know that we have a lot of funds for that ideas.
So as far as the websites, those free, right?
What sites?
I mean, the social media, so those free, right?
Uh, a lot of it would be free, but I'm talking a branding and a new website created.
On a major website in general.
You would have to figure in I T with that also. So what, what did you have in mind for the five thousand? Other than the M A S C and the item postings? When it comes to advertising, um, I mean, I didn't mean M A S C, um. Chamber Commerce. And um.
That would be and subscription and dues.
Right, there, there's um, they've got the website presence because you're a member. So the town of Maysville pops up as having a, a generic chamber website.
Haven't seen that, I've. Go through this quite a bit. I think we need to have our own. Coming from a background in advertising and marketing, we want some branding, we want some light, and we need a whole bunch of things to. Be our own. You think that's enough? You think it's too much? Ideas?
I don't know how much it is for those things this, these days that we have to pay for, for advertising. I know Facebook is free, but to create a website, you know. It would create it. We would have to get someone to create it.
Are you including copies? Are you including copies or signage, like a council meeting signage or? When council has a meeting, are you a lawn sign to put out there? Council meeting tonight. I mean, I just didn't know what your five thou, your increase to five thousand considered.
It's going to bring a website and maintain and it feeds to maintain those things. Database for communication. It's gonna be more than five thousand, but we can start the process. We can have somebody come and present and give us an idea of what they can do. This would give us a start at least.
She should add I T to that list.
You're okay with that? You guys ready to move on? Here's some subscriptions. Last year there was nine hundred, but this year. I think we need to put in an amount for training so each of you can go. To an in-person at the beginning of the year and then at the end of the year, there's another in-person and then there's online training. Um, I think online is thirty five dollars. The in-house training is like two hundred dollars. And so I've budgeted that and um. We've got the Chamber of Commerce, we've got the M A S C dues. Is there any other subscription or dues that we have that I haven't got listed there?
Training.
Say that again.
Clerk training.
Clerk training. Do you know what that number is?
No.
Insurance last year was fourteen thousand. It's the last one, fourteen thousand. Uh, can't remember the exact amount. We reimbursed the C E C. Six hundred, I think, seventy seven dollars. And they paid three thousand dollars for insurance on the building. Uh, I don't know what we came up with, six hundred and. Seventy or six hundred and forty dollars to reimburse them. Miss Collins, can you give me? An idea of where we came up with that number?
From the insurance company.
The insurance company?
The invoice that you sent me for the refund had the dollar figure to reimburse. And another one was just received for the golf cart, so the total invoice for the insurance is uh. A little over nine thousand. For the total premium.
Okay, so I'm not understanding, so you've got a. A letter back from the insurance.
Yes, the, they, when you deduct something from the insurance, it adjusts the total premium and then they sent. Right, but they sent the invoice notice, noticing the adjustment and giving the refund, um. For the premium that was needed.
That premium would not go all back to the C E C.
No, it's just, yeah, it's their portion that was taken off, so they paid in full that, that was discussed.
Okay, you're gonna have to probably show me that because I'm not understanding.
So the dollar figure that was on the insurance was itemized. When those items were removed, that exact dollar figure was pro rated. The portion that was unused is reimbursed. You sent it to me. You emailed it to me. That told me the refund. But I couldn't, I mean, uh.
There's not a refund for the C E C for six hundred and seventy.
It was, you told me to write them the check. I will send you, I will, I, it's in email. So I'll send it.
I'd love to see that. Bank charges, um. Do you know if that's a set fee spent for the past two years, five hundred dollars bank charts? I don't know what these bank charges are.
The bank charges would be associated with the statements.
Okay, by the five hundred dollars?
I would have to add them up. So I don't, I mean, I did not prepare the budget, so I'm just answering you this. I mean, depending on the account, the interest goes up or down.
This is expenses.
Right, so if the maintenance fees are more because the account doesn't have a certain dollar amount, that fluctuates.
So we've been budgeting five hundred dollars. Every year, just. You were not part of the process last year?
No.
Or the year before?
No, I did not create a budget, no.
No, were you part of the process of the?
No.
Will you check on last year's?
Say that again?
Will you check on last year's bank charges, please?
Yes, all of the twenty three to twenty four. All of those totals will be coming.
But they're in festival. I don't know about this. There's been a budget for five hundred dollars for it. Do you wanna continue? Christmas parade.
Say that one more time?
Christmas parade.
What did she say?
She wants to leave it on. Ordinances, online ordinances. You guys feel good about five hundred dollars for all of our ordinances being listed online?
There are some, I think that needs to be updated.
Yeah, I thought that was six hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what was on the budget. Miss Collins, you'll check that? QuickBooks, subscription.
Six point one.
It's six twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do you guys feel like it's necessary to have it online for six hundred and twenty-one dollars? You do? QuickBooks subscription. Um, we are over budgeted over. Thirty-two hundred dollars. I don't know why we're paying this. Three hundred and thirteen dollars a month for a QuickBooks.
That includes payroll and tax, and so it takes care of that stuff. The professionals, one that logs in to do what they need to.
Say that many a time?
The professionals are one that logs in to do what they need to.
Who does that?
Like an auditor or CPA or bookkeeper?
Who is that?
No one.
So we say three hundred and thirteen dollars to no one?
Mr. Friday was the last one that was assigned, and he was actively assisting, helping to correct things in QuickBooks.
Okay, who have we been paying every month?
Quick, QuickBooks. In order to have that ability, you have to have a subscription.
Oh, was they saying?
What's that?
How much are they charging them on?
The three hundred, what was it?
Three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Yeah. I don't know where that's six hundred.
No, 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 that's online.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so I, I'm not understanding the budget of five hundred dollars for QuickBooks. The year previously, spending four, seven hundred dollars.
I don't know.
Okay. There are many QuickBooks subscriptions that are far less than three hundred and thirteen dollars a month. That's excessive. For paying just a full person to, to do something that.
No, you're not paying a full person to do that.
You can get active voice person to help you if you need it, right? Or your assistant or something.
Yeah, quick, like you said, quick, it just needs to be evaluated, you need to compare apples to apples. Because if you get rid of it and you need it, you're just gonna get it right back.
If you get it, if you, we don't get it and you need it, we're in trouble.
Right. And it's needed, to correct taxes and. Um. Reconcile.
Okay, what, what I'm saying is, a budget was approved by the previous council last year, about five hundred. You're part of the process or not, you're pretty, and now we're old, like, thirty-seven hundred dollars. That was more.
So what do you project for next year?
Um. I've already projected twelve hundred dollars. And do a brand new subscription.
So what does that new subscription include?
Right now, I don't know, because I'm gonna sit down with experts that are. Sitting right here in this room, we'd be able to say what is the best way to do this at a very low cost. We've got former marriage that are sitting here, we've got people that work at banks, that are auditors that are sitting here, that would be able to assist us. But the over budget of thirty-seven hundred dollars. Is. Not gonna work. Even, we got thirty-eight hundred dollars for two employees that are participating there, that's not gonna change.
Oh, yes, it is, sir. Email correspondence was sent out several times.
Okay, well, subscribe to people.
Everyone who works for the town of Mayville has to pay, so. The.
They don't have, they don't have to participate in.
They do, is what I'm telling you. They don't have an option to opt out because that time has expired. You are the only one that had that option, and it was only because you do not receive pay.
Well, the maintenance group were able to opt out.
I'm telling you, they were not, people said no. You gave them the, that form, but that was not correct.
That came.
I know, it's a P-Bu form, but it's not correct.
That came. They said.
I know, but I have spoken to people, and it has to be backdated, they are not able to opt out. Everyone has to be backdated. So that figure has. And then there's, like, you can't even get to paying the, uh, late fees or the violations until this is. One, the enrollment is done, and two, that back figure pay is calculated. Because what's happened is.
Special action, we have some special action, professional fees, we have thirty-one thousand dollars. Three more minutes that we budgeted for that, we're over five thousand seven hundred sixty-one. Supplies, repairs. About that there, I had dollars over, but we are over all week and Sundays. Utilities, we're almost eleven thousand dollars over budget. Can go over a little bit more, let's grab the paperwork. If you go down to the bottom, total budget expenses. We'd like to be. Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I mean, seventy-seven dollars.
Where are you?
We are last thing. We've actually spent, and I can see. Not totally all of the. Use of office supplies, travel expenses, those kind of things, I can see some of those kind of things for us, so we're. Eight hundred dollars. So we're almost. Fourteen thousand dollars over.
Where do you see those numbers? I don't see anything. Where are you at?
I'm in. Totally, total budget expenses. So, so, but the act, some of the distance. You might not be right. The call, you know, this law was fragile, it was. And then you have. I can foresee that.
And. Excuse me.
Do you want me to say that?
Um, I saw, did you know, this is telling forward.
Correct.
So. Usually do.
It does.
So why would we just put?
Well, I guess.
I mean, why would we just do the roof and do the building? That's.
Say that again?
Why would we just do the roof and not?
Because roof is gonna stop the process, I've been deteriorating.
That building ain't be tell.
Garrett now?
To that would be. We need twenty-five dollars in the roof, so you need to use up the building. And who's to say the new one, that's not gonna be affected by the damage?
How many years ago was it that they, they last cleared out from the, the black mold and spent like, what? Seven, almost sixty thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars?
Can you tell me who did the construction?
No.
But you know how much they spent?
I'm not exact figure, this is preceding me.
What do you find that is? The amount during the construction company.
Sure. You took care of a property inspection on that?
Yeah.
Can you share that, please?
I'm not the inspection on.
The old city map?
Yeah, we've been paying, claiming them. To take care of that building, so I have an insurance man, he comes in to do an inspection on it. And file a claim on it just to see what the, it would be, be done. Based on premiums that we had paid. They rejected the claim and said, because of.
That's wrong, too.
Because of the roof that was put on. Is incorrect, whoever did the construction has caused all of the damage. It put a, a metal roof on. A flat. So all of the screws, it's just went through all of them.
So how did it mold the first time? Do you remember?
So for the sixty thousand dollars for construction company to come in and do what they did. They should have some kind of bonding or something.
So have you projected?
No, we're good, it's, we're good, it's, I'd have somebody come over and look at it.
Me?
Uh.
What for me?
Uh, it was just a construction company, they were just doing some roofing on the house here and down, and I asked them to come look at it.